All right, folks, being that it's 6:30, we'll get started. We have a small turnout at the council for a variety of conflicts. So with that, I would like to stand for the pledge of allegiance. But before we do the pledge, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Nancy Wallette, longtime wife of city police officer Dane Wallette. Just a moment of silence, if you would. Thank you. Nancy, for those who don't know, past the night's enough in the shopping center here in town, tragic circumstances. So I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone in the audience who would like to do public comment on any topic that's not on the agenda? Mr. Manion, you're good with that?
I'm going to reserve my right to wait until the end of the meeting.
Wait too long. We'll move on to emergency ordinance regarding truck traffic on Upper Weldon Street. This is a continuation of the topic that's been ongoing for a few months now relative to truck traffic utilizing Upper Weldon to access industrial businesses in St. Albans City and Town. Don, I'll turn that.
We're just looking for a simple motion to keep the emergency ordinance in place. Expires every 30 days. The next item is to begin the process of putting a permanent ordinance in place.
I move we continue the emergency ordinance regarding truck traffic on Upper Weldon Street.
Second. Motion by Kate, second by Mike. Any other comments, Marie?
No, I'm fine with it.
I would just share with a quick update that as part of that, the city, in conjunction with regional planning, is working with GPS companies to alter their directions. We're finding a lot of the trucks are being altered down or directed down Upper Weldon, and we're trying to adjust that by contacting GPS companies. There's been a few trucks that have been taken into the state, so we're trying, we continue to work on them. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we'll have the first reading of the ordinance for the truck traffic that's in your packets. They want a chance to review that. The only comment I have is in section three, line 21, one comment was made to me that what this allows for motor trucks over 16,000 pounds shall not, shall be prohibited from Upper Weldon Street. This prohibit, this prohibition shall not apply to motor trucks making deliveries to or from properties on Upper Weldon. My only change to that would be Bob's Meat Market on Barlow Street as well, so that's not the dom about that. We will adjust the language accordingly to allow for trucks to access Bob's Meat Market. I'm not sure if anyone else had any comments on this. Anyone in the audience, comments on the ordinance?
Do you want to add in more Barlow?
More Barlow Street probably might be the best way to put it.
Has the situation improved at all today, has the frequency of the traffic changed?
I think so. It's better than it was. We're seeing dump trucks on the tree, on the street now, so I'm just interested in where they're going. I think this language is going to cover those types of vehicles, too.
What's in it?
I don't know. I have only seen one, and I didn't really think much of it, but I was speaking to one of the residents of the street, Sally Lenon, and she said she's seen them go down loaded and come up empty. So yes, it's better, but it's still happening.
So I've also heard from one of your residents in your board, Bob Avery, he still expressed concerns about the traffic, but he did say he thought it had done. And I told him it's a longer, it's taking a little longer to, to educate drivers.
Yeah.
What's that, Don?
I've got an incredible draft out there.
It's the ordinance, not the... Marie, any comments on that?
No.
Mike, anything? So all those in favor of the first reading of the proposed motor truck operation ordinance?
I have been, well, in the motion. Sorry, I thought it was on the floor. I will move to accept the first reading with the amendments.
Second. Second by Marie. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the first reading passes. We also have in your packet a consideration of approval of assessors, errors, and omissions for 119 High Street. We would ask Mr. Southwood to join us. Hello, David.
Good evening, all.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Being a grandfather.
Oh, you are.
First time?
Can't imagine.
Still look different?
Just one of your kids.
One of my kids?
Yep.
Yes.
Do you want to go ahead, David, on that?
I'm all flustered.
Got the error or the omission?
Glad we started out this way. The property in discussion is 119 High Street. Change of appraised value. The property owner of 119 High Street has disputed her tax bill. In 2016, the property owner executed a boundary line adjustment and at the same time secured permit to remove a barn and garage. Demolition of the barn and garage was never recognized by the Fraser's office. The error has since been corrected and revisions were sent to property owner. Original value of the property was $145,000, $100. Revised value is $139,400, a difference of $5,700. There's no appeal to the change, has been filed. The adjustment to the grant list must now come before the city council for approval as an error and omission. And the staff would like to recommend for the council's approval.
So that's for the, that's for the current tax season?
Will be for this.
Anyone have any questions for those? Michael, you good?
Yep.
Marie, you good?
Yep.
So we entertain a motion to approve the errors and omission based on what David shared with us?
So move.
So move, Kate, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marie. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The error and omission is approved.
I agree with the orders actually, but I do need the signatures of the select board members up here to see. I can get that.
Get the meat out if you want to come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Hold on a second, we've just got three. You need four.
Yeah, four on the clock for it. Anything else out here, David, before you shut up? Got a picture?
Yeah.
Chip, thanks for coming in tonight. We are going to be discussing the second reading on the proposed changes to permitting fees.
Yes. Permitting fees haven't been updated for a while, and there are a couple things that we're recommending for change. First of all, to increase the cost of mailing a notice to butters around the property to $7 per butter, and that's because of the increased postal fees associated with certified mailings with return received requested. We would like to remove the set fees for providing copies of the land development regulations or maps because oftentimes we can just produce something very specific to what the person might be coming in looking for, and otherwise, printing costs have gone down in numbers. $20 for the regulations, $5 for a map, they're a lot, they're a lot more expensive than what we can actually produce these documents for. We have a habit of just letting people have things if they come in and they want copies of something, so I don't see why we need to start charging them and keeping track of all that.
All that online as well.
And it's online, yeah, exactly. We have a policy for charging $500 if someone requests rezoning of a specific property. We went over this last time during the first reading. You know, if their suggestion is something that the planning commission feels implements the city plan, well, that's our job, and we shouldn't be charging someone to come forward with that idea. So I'm adding in a footnote that allows the planning commission to waive the charge if they feel that it's, that it's a step forward toward implementing the city plan at the end. And then establishing a records management fee of $12 per permit to go toward the new citizen served digital permitting system that we are getting ready to deploy. That's going to be a great new tool for, both for the office but also for applicants and citizens in general. But the permits themselves should foot some of that bill because it's the processing of those, of those permits that will, you know, make up the cost of the program itself. And then there's just one thing I've removed at the end, almost as a technical correction. Our current recent reference is a $10 recording fee, which is, and it's still $10, but that's something that's set by state statute and the city clerk, and it's not set as a city permitting fee, so I'm actually removing the amount and just putting in a little reminder that there is a recording fee that people also have to pay.
Anyone else?
No.
Any questions for Chip?
So Chip. So for any permit request, that $12 fee will be in addition to the base fee. So for instance, if you were doing residential construction permit, the $30 base fee plus the 12 would be 42 plus two square footage.
Yes.
And the last time that the amounts were changed or increased was in 2012, it looks like?
Yes.
Okay. And those are all, the base fees are all staying the same?
Yeah, I mean, the only changes we're making at this time.
Okay.
This was the, no changes to make from the first reading, right?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
Good. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the changes to the permitting fees.
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the changes to the permitting fees.
Second. Motion by Marie, second by Michael. Anyone in the audience want to comment on this? Hearing none. Any other comments on this, counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, second reading of proposed changes to the city permitting schedule passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Now I entertain a motion to recess to go into liquor board.
I move we recess to enter the liquor control board meeting.
Your second?
Second.
I'll vote in favor.
Aye.
Curry, want to come on up? Want to stick coming in tonight?
Sure, of course. So I have two minor violations tonight, which is really great since we haven't had anything in months and months, so.
He's down, he's down disappointing that girl he appointed.
You know, she's not excited. So the enforcement division of the Department of Liquor Control conducted a compliance check at Eastern Dragon, and they first commended them for their vigilant efforts in strict adherence to the law that prohibits the sale of alcohol to those under the age of 21. They passed that test. However, there was a minor administrative education regulation standard that they had some training that wasn't listed up on their wall, so their certificate was not present at the time. The other compliance check that was conducted was at Food City, in which there was a finding of the sale of tobacco products to minors, and they received a second offense for administrative penalty. After conferring with council member Tim Hawkins, it was determined that neither case need be present before the council. That's all.
Is this disinformative to us, or do you need any actual comments?
These are just informative. All these violations are recorded on the spreadsheet throughout, you know, and added to these establishment files.
So we'll have a chance to see all of the license?
Yes. We did receive all of the list of 2019 licensees, so when we do that each spring, that violation list is presented as well.
Any questions, Curry?
Those are pretty straightforward, thank you.
Curry, I'd just like to add, from the council's perspective, thank you for all your efforts. We know you've been short handed in the clerk's office, and thank you for making it work, and I know you're looking for, looking towards getting an assistant, so we just want to thank you for your efforts and keeping the shop open.
I appreciate that and every effort of the council as well. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is...
We have to move that.
Oh, yeah, move. Anything to move on there?
So I move that we recess from liquor control and re-enter the regular city council agenda.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So next on the agenda is consideration of the approval of extra territorial allocation application for James Hungerford on Rose Drive. Did you want to bring your right hand man up with you as well?
Yeah, I'll sit more. I'll stay back here. Near the door.
Jimmy, thanks for coming in. Appreciate you making time, so we'll turn it over to you, and you can make the presentation.
So the proposed project is on a lot on Rose Drive that's currently an empty field just north, not north, just off the road of the city's wastewater treatment plant. It's a proposed 5,900 square foot contractor shop that is currently being designed for one EU of water and sewer allocation. We had received approval from the town and are now seeking it from the city as well.
What's a contractor shop?
That's a place to put all our dump trucks and our vehicles and kind of home base. It's really going to be very similar to the other state of Louisiana down there.
Which is after, are you going back into construction, or are you still focusing on the...
No, it's a paving contractor shop.
Still paving?
Yeah. Listens to put some of our equipment aside to file.
That's fairly straightforward. Are you, you're in the bottom of the...
Yeah, behind the body shop right now.
Don, do you have any allocation wise gallons?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions, Michael? Kate?
No.
Marie?
No.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the allocation application for James Hungerford and Hungerford's caving.
So move.
Second.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, most of us, as you have your allocation done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sorry to make you come. Tom, sorry to make you come up on the light for that.
No worries. Other way you can get in my building.
Thank you, Jimmy, for coming in. Good luck. Moving on to interview candidates for the Parks Commission. Bill, why don't you come on up? Why don't you come up and sit together at the same time? This is where the grilling really starts. You don't care about water allocation.
Where's the ceiling?
No, I'm going to bring it off. Put a spotlight on it.
Wow, it's very exciting.
Let me first say thank you both for your interest to serve on the city commission. Appreciate it. I know you both have been active over the years in parks and recreation, so thank you for that. What we'll do is we'll just alternate, and I can answer the question as you go. For the first one, which you may have been asked on the application, but what has motivated you to serve on the Parks Commission? So what do you need? We'll go first.
So I've been a resident in St. Albans now for almost 13 years, give or take, and we've chosen to raise our kids here and been involved in St. Albans City School and in the rec program through bike coaching or just being an all around parent go-to, and I really just love living in the city, and I want there to be parks for my children to go to and play that I can turn them loose on a bike and say, "Go, go have fun" for however long. So for where I live, our closest park is certainly Holden Park, and I've watched over time as those parks have improved in the time that I've lived here, and I actually feel like a safe space that my 11-year-old can ride her bike and go meet her friends and play on the playground. I just really want to be a part of continuing that and making Taylor Park a destination and not somewhere to be avoided, which it isn't, but when I first moved here, it was on the edge of just turning that corner, so anything I can do to be involved in that is why I would like this opportunity.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, and my reasons are very similar. I'm looking for a safe place for the kids and families to contribute, and the parks in the city have mental criteria. Taylor Park is a jewel. It's just, it's a wonderful place, summer or winter, fall, spring, it doesn't matter, it's just a wonderful place to be. And unfortunately, I've worked very unfortunate, I've worked outside of St. Albans, although I've lived here all my life, basically. I think my family moved here with three. Unfortunately, I worked outside of town, so I never had the opportunity to serve on the board before, and that's sort of, that's my reason.
Thank you. What experiences in your background have influenced your desire to serve on the board, and what would you, Bill?
Okay, well, in my, my business, I have general business management experience. I've had a lot of management, working with others on projects, keeping projects within budgets, and keeping projects on top. And as I said, I think the, in dealing with other folks on the Parks Commission or other members of the community, it's important to realize you have to work with people and to get done what you want to do, what you want to get done.
Okay.
So the better part of my career has been in healthcare, which is not always an easy landscape to navigate, and part of the work that I do is often times the investigator, the compliance person, the risk manager. I don't always deliver good news, and forging those relationships to be able to do that in a way that doesn't create animosity has been a real huge part of what I've done at Northwestern Medical Center and in my, in my previous employment, and part of that was planning events, so I've been part of the NFC Activities Committee for, I was the chair of it for four years, but I've been part of it for almost nine years, engaging in my community so that my coworkers see me outside of the realm of healthcare, that I am a human with blood that bleeds and kids that cry and scream and do all of the same things that they do so that we have those relationships. Up until this year, I've served as a member of the event leadership team for frankly, County Relay for Life, having lost my father and mom recently to cancer, something that was really important to me, so being involved at that level of different things to make sure that me and my family are well engaged in this community, but also so that we can, and I can make a difference here and make this a place for people to come and want to live. And doing all of those things has really helped me figure out how to meet the needs of folks and get them to come to those events, get them to join me where they're at and where I'm at, and I think that that, I could apply that same logic to working on a Parks Commission or any mission.
So you're open to us assigning you to other committees?
Well, now, wait a minute. Absolutely, Tim, yes, absolutely.
Damien will come back. What are the qualities of a successful Parks Commission? Your viewpoint?
Yeah, I mean, this is interesting because I'm not sure that I've lived somewhere where I've seen a Parks Commission until I've lived here, and you know, the town where I grew up, it just, we didn't really have any parks, we didn't have any such, any such thing in New York, and so for me, it's, I believe it is successful now because I've seen the change in, in the parks around this area and how I've just felt as a resident and being proud of them, of having the summer concert series here and making that, going to Taylor Park and grabbing a picnic lunch was just not something that my husband and I would have done, so presumably, it is successful now, whatever, whatever model we're using, and I think for people to be able to continue to see and feel and touch those improvements and feeling proud of the town they live in and the parks that are available to them as a sign of a successful commission, and I feel like it has been successful up until now.
Well, I think what makes a group number of commission is ability and desire to work with other people, and the understanding that as a commission member, there's a difference between nice to haves and must haves because money is a finite object. So you, you have to be able to prioritize what you're doing and what you need to do and what you want to do in the future. And of course, we need, we want to always continue working forward, moving forward to make sure the parks are safe and available for use for our citizens.
And lastly, back to you, Bill, the vision for, do you have a vision for the parks in the world?
I don't have any grandiose vision, but I would like to do is make sure it keeps on the same path that it's on today. It's, as I mentioned before, it's a perfect, no, nothing's perfect, but it's a very, very good path to be on. The facilities have been updated continually. Again, Taylor Park is a jewel to have for the city, and, you know, there's always little tweaks. I do have a couple of questions I may want to bring up to the, to the Parks Commission, but those would be relatively minor things, ones kind of major and late required funding, but if I don't ask a question, I won't know, so I do want to see, make sure that we don't
Very much in line with those answer, and for me, really, much more grassroots piece of that is just in general, having parks in every part of the city that people can go to. So I know that there are three parks that we talk about here, but someday I would love to see that grow, you know, a park closer to St. Albans City School, something between here and when you head out towards the shopping centers, so walkability, cycleability, you know, safe biking, so that you can bark to, hike to two or three parks in a day and, you know, have a meal at every park, whatever, you know, just so that it's... You know, just so that it's, that it's, they're destinations and they're not just afterthoughts of, "Oh, what are we going to do today? Well, let's go to Houghton Park" instead of, you know, "What can we do today at Houghton Park?" because that's available to us and it's free. I understand that it costs money, but it's a free in the sense that it doesn't cost my child or me money to go there, walk, use the services that are there and just continue growth and really focus on wellness and fitness. There's just, I think I've probably done it in healthcare a little too long to know the effects that both the opioid crisis and obesity are having on kids now. Kids my daughter's age, she's eleven, and my son is four. And I want them to grow up knowing that fitness is a part of their life and not something they're doing because they've already taken some long turns. And parks are a great place to start with that.
Mr. Coldus up to this point, are you still the chair of the Parks?
I am.
Do you think, both of you individuals could work with Mr. Coldus? Billy, you gave that one a dollar, Bill? I know you got your one, though.
I have not known him that long, but I've known him well. He coaches my kids in swimming, so absolutely, absolutely.
Do, Michael, do you have any questions?
I know that there's been a lot of conversation around, especially the master plan process for the parks, around the balance between monuments and some of the things that are a little bit more about our past and the reverence and memorials and some of the family activities. And I'm wondering if you might just comment a little bit on what your approach is to sort of, when you think about especially Taylor Park, striking that balance.
Go back to, you had memorials and family activities.
I really think Taylor Park is a wonderful place as it is today. I mean, in the, yeah, it kind of the, with all the activities that go on there on a continuing basis, I don't know what else you would want to put in Taylor Park as far as families are concerned. There's walking paths, there's a beautiful fountain. We, you know, as I said, it's kind of the centerpiece of the city as it is today. I don't know if you're talking about swings and a playground type deal. Yes, no, maybe there's something to think about. And there's no reason, there's no reason not to think about something and review it and discuss it. Like to say off the top of my head, I can't think of anything right now that I would want to change without a very serious review.
So I was a history major in undergrad, and so memorials and monuments, I mean, Gettysburg, the graveyard there are destination for me, most people are on the beach and I'm like, "Let's rob some greitems." So I appreciate absolutely the value of having that in a town. I think it's important to know where you've come from to figure out where you're going to go. But there is also a reason why that can't be fun. You know, history can absolutely play a role in family events. So there's the balance, even if it's just getting to know our parks with the scavenger hunt, you know, find this Civil War memorial, find this and that. You know, that there's ways that you can blend those two things together. They don't have to be mutually exclusive.
Thank you. Michael, do you have anything else? Tim?
No. Just a comment, I think we're lucky to have two viable candidates that really want to see, you know, things really happen and be great for the city. So thanks a lot for showing interest in it.
Thank you.
So a couple of things, Tom, I just made a note here. Who is stepping down from the board?
Barbara.
Just Barbara?
Yeah, Jeff's spot has not been filled. He left, stepped down in the last year.
So there are two vacancies?
Yes, there are two vacancies, yep. We've win a year for the one and now we have two candidates here, third candidate, I understand.
Kristen, can you give me Barbara's address, I can send her a second, send her a, you know, her time and community. And is there a, is there a spot for an alternate on that?
There's not currently an alternate position.
I'm looking for the council for a motion.
So we did have a third applicant in our packet.
Valdemar Garabé was unable to join us tonight. He was the third candidate. I'm not sure what the council's preference is relative to that.
Tom, is there any history around for not having an alternate?
No, I think since the commission established, there hasn't been one. We actually were considering exploring that idea, but then Barbara was missing a significant amount of time in the winters and she stepped down, so that kind of alleviated that need. But I mean, that's something that we're not opposed to from a commission standpoint. The council's interested in that.
His application's in the ready, I think he'll be next to at least consider him. He goes, Bill, but it's so nice when we have three really qualified people who have an interest.
Yeah, I'm inclined to move to appoint the candidates we have before us to fill the two open seats. And then if the ballot wants to maybe come before us at a future meeting, we consider having him.
I'm more sure than you.
I would move that we appoint Jamie Pinkham and we move to the Parks Commission for the three-year terms that are, are they both three-year terms?
What was the best plan, it's thirteen years.
I don't think they would consider that.
So we have a motion to appoint Jamie and Bill for three-year terms on the Parks Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Murray. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, both passes. Once again, thank you for stepping up and being a part of the city's structure and we appreciate your time.
Yes, thanks very much.
If the council is open to it, I would also like to take a moment just to skip down to Major Court and at the same time reappoint Tom Coldus, Dana Booth, and Alex Hating for the park so that they don't have to hang around for the rest of the evening. Something we don't, I'm sure.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we accept the slate of appointments. Then you just move.
I'll second. I'll second.
Great, thank you. Any questions of how Mr. Coldus operates the meeting, is anything relevant to that?
Does everybody actually want to be reappointed?
You assume those things?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, none? Hearing that, all three appointed. Thank you all three for your time and effort. And we look forward to the parks getting better as we move forward and having the Taylor Park discussion, which we are having coming up on the agenda. Chip will be talking about the sidewalk and whatnot, so you're welcome to stay if you so choose. But it looks like Mr. Grant is on his way out.
I'm staying until someone else leaves.
You go use the bathroom. But thank you all for coming in and treating it. We're going to move to the next item on, which is dishes dog here. Ben, and you guys want to come forward together? Do you want to just state your names and...
My name, Jim Benson Animal Control, obviously. Lieutenant Ben Kucher, same on the speed here.
Thanks for coming in.
No problem.
So we did receive the report in our packets based on Benson on Bang Street, I believe. I thought the report was fairly straightforward, but if there's anything you want to add to it, either one. It appears by the report, it's been a, I guess my question is, has been a reoccurring incident?
From talking with the tenants, it appears that it has been, yes.
Go ahead, Ben.
On the report that you got, did you get paragraph number two for November twenty-sixth? I just want to make sure.
What was that?
Paragraph two, it should be all the way down on the bottom page.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for November twenty-sixth. Did you lose a complaint?
Okay, yeah, okay. So the apartment house is coming to apartments? It gives the impression it's multiple, three or four.
I think there's at least four, I believe, or...
I think there's six, but there's two are empty maybe.
That there's a fire there at one point.
And as of right now, the dog owners aren't here. Two of the victims are not here, but one of the tenants is here.
So do we know, is this a building that does not allow pets?
Excuse me?
Does this building allow pets or not?
No, this building does not allow pets. The landlord is Mark Leclerc. I spoke with him. He actually had an incident back in July, I think, of this year and where his dog was attacked by the same dog. And he's in the process right now of going through the eviction with these tenants. I guess there's two tenants there that both have animals, two separate residents, but he's either involved with them. So he was advised of the meeting, so...
Sir, are you here for this?
Yes.
You want to state your name and share any comments?
William Durbin, very long-lived tenant there. In my twelfth year or something like that. I was out for half a year when the fire happened, but I've been back for over a year now. Sort of, I mean, not officially, but sort of a manager there since I take care of a lot of things and I have a good rapport with Mr. Leclerc. And he actually is trying to get here, we saw the seven twenty-five time. Thought he might be able to come in in the next few minutes too. His dog's been attacked twice, just once. Dog, the dog has lunged at me on the leash. The dog saw me thirty feet away and I was just standing there and he lunged at me on the leash and Jessica held on fortunately, but I, you know, I don't want to get hurt and I don't want to have to hurt the dog to protect myself either. I do have a picture of the entrances if you want to see. I thought I had an agreement with Jessica to use a fifteen-foot leash and they routinely add another fifteen to twenty feet to the leash, which basically makes it impossible to get off our stairway entrance. Ask him, the dog is, I'm sure it's right here, I got to make sure he comes and sees it. But this is just yesterday that I took this picture.
This is on the backside of the building?
Yeah, so it's attached to the railing there. And it's three hand leashes and then a fifteen to twenty-foot leash, retractable, I guess, something like that. Do you need to see one or...
And this door in the picture is a shared, and it says that?
The white door is theirs and the stairway is for both Devin Blanks apartment and mine. It's the only way out, so. A fifteen-foot leash off that railing would actually...
Still be close.
It would be close. It would allow us to get off the stairway and kind of skirt the dog, but, and he's not out there a lot. And for that reason, I have a real concern for the welfare of the animals. They're not, they aren't outside very much and there's only a parking lot there. There's no place for them to run. And I've discussed that with Jessica several times.
So it sounds like you've had cordial discussions with them.
Yeah, yeah. But she also, I saw in the report that she said that after Ariana got bitten, that Ariana hadn't gotten bitten, so that's the report there. She has a problem with the truth sometimes, to be honest with you. She, maybe she just wanted to deny it and, no, their heart's in the right place. I think they have three dogs and that's the only one that's vicious. And I think they're maybe all three rescue dogs, but this is not the proper place and she wasn't supposed to have a dog there in the first place.
How much does the dog weigh?
Sixty pounds.
And there's no relationship between...
Me and the dog, you have a dog, no?
It looks a little like me, though.
I mean, my take on it, I thought the report was fairly straightforward. I thought, I thought multiple situations. You know, as an owner, I would be concerned about the strength of that leash. You know, it's not a chain, it's not a, seems sort of...
One sixty-pound dog, yeah. And I want you to know that I did, I provided a hitch and a cable for the dog over near a grindstone that would give fifteen feet leeway to get by in the other direction. It's out to the right of this photo here. And I don't think that Jessica ever used it. And then when they did, they added three leashes or a twenty-foot leash to that, so it would get you from the other side. There was no wind as far as that was concerned. And, you know, she talked, she agreed, "Oh, yeah, we'll use the fifteen-foot leash", and then never did.
I mean, my take as an apartment individual, you should not have to sneak by the dog coming and going.
I appreciate that, that's true. And when the dog has bitten people, he has not unleashed. I mean, Devin said the second time, the second time he got bitten when Ariana got bitten, that Jessica was just trying to go through the door and the dog got out the door and attacked Ariana. And that was something that I never wanted to happen because I knew that he had already bitten Devin and then, and then he goes and does this. They, she claims that he's being trained, but he shows no evidence of being trained.
Michael, how old's the dog?
It tends to be better with puppy, but it says three-year-old.
Yeah, it's like...
I'm not sure what the threshold of a puppy and...
Depends who you talk to, two years, so.
I don't know what's the limit of when you can really train a dog. And by the way, training is training the owner, isn't it, really?
Yeah, that's not... You can still teach an old dog new tricks.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you have to be able to do it.
In charge of it, so. They need to be in the country somewhere where they can... This is Mark Leclerc, he's the...
Hi, Mark.
Hi.
We just heard from William and the report we got was fairly thorough, we believe. We're just going to get to the point of asking questions. Do you want the chair?
Just that I'm worried for the neighbors and the tenants very much. Dog's definitely out of control.
So where are you in your eviction process?
Going through the fourteen-day and on to the next. So I'm not sure, I mean, this hopefully will help me having this in there too so I can move along a little bit faster.
Are the dogs allowed under the lease that you have with owners?
No. And if the council were to issue a decision in writing that the dog be removed and, you know, give them seven days or so, three days or whatever, at the end of that period, it doesn't happen, would the department take actions to force that removal or find them? Or what would be our recourse to handle it?
I think in the past, there have been huge fines and I think there have been one occasion where we actually had to type up a search warrant in order to actually to obtain the animal and remove the animal. But that was placed in time.
Anyone have any other questions for Mark, William or...
How long has she lived there, Jessica? Has she been at that residence?
Maybe a better question, so Mark, about eleven months.
So on the report, the recommendation from the police... So on the report, uh, the recommendation, um, from the police department, if you want, but recommends that the city council issue an order for, um, disorder came to remove Benson from the residence. Do you want to elaborate on, I mean, is it fairly straightforward?
I just think the, with the apartment, the area where the dog is being kept, um, traffic's coming and going, multi-apartment building, um, with the number of lights and incidents that have happened with the new one that just occurred about a week ago, I think it'd be safe for the dog and also for the individuals inside of the, uh, residence.
Dom, I know normally we, um, we discuss this, we deliberate and discuss, but I think this is fairly straightforward.
You can go from the bench, yeah.
So, um, I guess I would entertain a motion to support the recommendation of the police department to remove the dog from the residence. So?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Are you good with that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to pose? Guys, thanks for coming in. So, the way we will, if you want to talk about process, Dom or Mark, let him know it. So the extra cases are?
We'll, we'll, uh, we'll issue something that just memorializes the council's, uh, soon and, um, that allows them to serve, uh, in the process. And just start from there and maybe we'll use the, um, ordinance to issue tickets and infractions just like we do for a dog running a lot. It could follow up pretty quickly.
So that's what we'll do from this point. A letter will be sent this week?
Yeah.
We'll get it out this week. We'll get it out. They should be receiving it, Mark, and if you have any questions, you can come and, uh, contact Dom if you're at City Hall.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you for coming in. Thank you, guys. We'll be in the room soon and, and Will said on the other. Um, wallet free?
Wallet, yes.
Proceed, thank you.
Um, we're gonna be in the process of taking something up in some way. Hopefully get that done probably a bit tomorrow. Um, I'll get that, um, for the same thing. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening, guys. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, um, a brief update on the Route Seven light pen study. Chip, I believe that's all you.
Thank you very much. Your packet, um, includes a, sort of a taste of what this project's been working on. It's, uh, sort of the same exercise that we went through with, um, the Taylor Park Master Plan in that it was a very conceptual exercise. Uh, but it's actually even, you might say, broader in terms of its scope because there are various different types of alternatives that are possible on, on the main street of Route Seven between downtown and the town zone or the border for bicycles and pedestrians. Um, so what, what you have is a draft of some of the alternatives that the consultants at RSG have pulled together for a final report. And the project's been getting, um, input from Rise Vermont and, and other representatives of the city and the town. It's had at least one public hearing at Town Hall and I think it will have one more before the end of the year. The, um, you know, the next step for the city, after all, this is all done, is to, you know, I have a conversation with staff, maybe the planning commission, which is very interested in, in this project and has been keeping tabs on it and city council about, you know, what are some ideas in here that the city might want to pursue? Certainly, um, on our end of things between downtown and, uh, you know, the, uh, city's boundary with the town. Things like, you know, do we want to, uh, consider sidewalks, crosswalk, uh, a better connection to the rail trails? This report will have some great, um, considerations and ideas for us to consider.
Who makes the final decisions? I mean, you're, you're on Route Seven, obviously you're in Main Street here. Is that a B-Trans discussion with city town? What, what is the collaboration relative to getting to a final, final thing?
You know, um, it's class one road within the city, so technically we get to make the final decisions. But we are supposed to follow some federal codes that are set down for how things get laid out and the signs you put up and that sort of thing. I think one of the strengths of this report is it does allow us to have a conversation with the town and B-Trans about, all right, if we want to put a sidewalk all the way up to the messenger or, and past it, you know, where would that meet up? Uh, past the city boundary, let's make sure there isn't some weird dog leg in the thing, you know? And, and to talk about timing, you know, who's gonna do what? And, and even the idea of a potential joint project, federal funding, everything. But ultimately, what happens in the city i- is, is decided by yourselves on the city council. If we get federal funding, you know very well the, the review process we have to go through with B-Trans and FHWA, but still, it's our decision what we ultimately build. And, and it's our decision, the sort of purpose and needs that we come up with that's gonna guide a project. What is it we want to accomplish?
You and I have talked about this before, but is that, we've had some pedestrian concerns lately.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, again, I'll suck it a little bit, but still, it's, it's walkability, goes to walkability and that is the, um, signage relative to pedestrians and, and our crosswalks. Is that, to your point, is that our decision or is that, uh, a conversation with B-Trans as well?
The, um, thing that happens is sometimes if we want some federal funding or we get another chance for, you know, class one paving like we did on Main Street, if B-Trans sees things we've done that are not up to code, they will bring it up as an issue. So they can't exactly tell us what to do, but they could say, they're not gonna participate in something unless we, you know, come into compliance with what they'd like to see. One of the things we've heard specifically about those rapid flashing beacons that you can put on a button activation at a crosswalk is that, you know, the FHWA says you, you can't put those at every crosswalk. You gotta be very deliberate about where you put those. So, one of the things we have heard about B-Trans is they want to know about some things like that and if we want to put them in, they, they would very much like to have input into what we do because, you know, they'd like to see things a certain way. And there are some actual, there's some valid concerns with B-Trans and FHWA about some of the things they'd like in terms of starting to lose the effectiveness of certain practices. If you put them everywhere, then it just all is the same. But it's really a case-by-case basis in the end. But it is, it is good to check in with B-Trans if you can.
No questions, but I think this is an important project for us to look at. You know, um, just from purely a safety standpoint, but just also creating a more connected community that's walkable, bikeable, you know, sort of builds a network of paths and parks and, you know, expands the community. I think there's a lot of potential, potential helping, economic growth, all kinds of things. I just, it's exciting. No, we're ways away from it, but I think it's something to look at.
Chip, was there any discussion about, um, if projects do accomplish some of these recommendations are formally drafted in the pipeline, that as development happens, that development could essentially, those things would sort of be there as requirements of some of that new development moving forward? Or is this just really high-level conceptual risk point?
This is high-level. If we took some of these alternatives and, and we moved them to the point where, you know, the city council says this is what we want, to make a statement, make a resolution, then both, you know, in an act, in a DRV proceeding, the city, in an act of fifty proceeding, you know, it, it could become something that becomes required, uh, through state or local permitting. And, and we would benefit by the virtue of having gone through this project, this joint project, and then thinking about what do we want us to do, what do we want to do? And then getting more deliberate in terms of, of what we actually like to implement.
Are you any questions?
No, I, I'd like to see something there happen so many times at night driving back from the shopping centers, like somebody walking dark clothing. So I hope that'd be nice to have a sidewalk there.
Yep. Okay, anything else you want to share? You don't?
Not on this one. I mean, yeah, I love to share a lot, but this is supposed to be a brief update.
You want to move on to the municipal policies and regulations for CDV?
Yes, thank you. So you probably saw the news, we were awarded a planning grant of over thirty thousand dollars to help the almond blossom schoolhouse on Lake Street, um, get people that could accept one hundred kids and, and accept, um, third shift daycare and really fill a need in the community. So, um, it's a VCDP grant, there are lots of, um, eyes to dot and teeth to cross and there are two particular things we'd like the city council to consider approving tonight. One is, in the second page of this memo, is, um, a resolution that, uh, would have Northwest Regional Planning Commission doing, uh, some of the plant, the general administration and program management for the grant. They've been a great partner in this moving forward and, and they would fulfill some roles in terms of seeing things move forward. And then, um, at the, the rest of the packet is municipal policies and codes that we need to pass in order to accept any VCDP funding with the signature paid at the end. And we've basically approved these many times, but I think the difference here is maybe the whistleblower piece. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see anything in here that, that we wouldn't want to sign on to, um, in general, or that certainly that we wouldn't want to sign on to in order to have the opportunity of VCDP funding, so. Recommendation is to approve that.
Are there administrative dollars associated with the grant?
Um, yes, there are. NRPC would be doing the bulk of the work and we, we have some money budgeted in the planning and development budget to help see these things through for the good of the city. I don't see it being much of a draw on our staff time.
So you need signatures in two spots?
Yeah, I'll separate them.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the, um, policies for the VCDP grant? I move that we adopt the resolution to designate our regional planning commission as the, uh, grant administrator, as you were, and, uh, as presented and, um, adopt the municipal policies and codes as presented.
Second.
Any other questions, Chip? Hearing on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed, motion passes? So we'll sign off on that, Chip. I feel like I'm playing those old chat spooders today.
Good job. Okay.
We'll see how it goes when we get to the warrants.
Any other questions you have, other residents too?
Yeah.
Could you just make a quick last?
Not, not nearly as formal, I want to say, council speaker. So next item on the agenda, uh, Taylor Park walkways, Chip, your backup lighting plan?
So, Taylor Park Master Plan. There are some improvements people would like to see sooner rather than later in the park. One would be lighting, perhaps more lighting, but also equating fixtures and, and better dependability and perhaps even a better aesthetic. Um, the thing about improvements to Taylor Park in the master plan is that, um, it, you sort of have to consider many of the aspects of it if you want to tackle any one. Staff isn't recommending at this point that we plow ahead with what was in that master plan. We were always saying that that's a master plan and there still has to be a conversation about what, about what actually gets built. But if we want to consider new lighting in Taylor Park, um, improvements to the walkways, then we need to start at a, sort of a final design process where we go to the next step in design. It's like we went through the conceptual step with Wagner Hodgson and, and the great steering committee that we pulled together for the master plan and now we gotta get to the sixty percent plans where we really ground-truth some of the things we want to do and see if they're even possible, how much they're gonna cost. Um, and so, we're looking for the council's blessing to get into what we'd have to do to start coming up with some final designs for the walkways and lights in the, um, as they were depicted in the master plan. Um, and certainly to check in with the Parks Commission and the city council as things go. And this would be part of the process where we do start to decide what we'd really like to engage in for improvements in the park. And by engineering, um, an engineering plan that looks at everything that was laid out, it also allows us to phase in certain improvements, knowing that they would match up with the next phases if everything's planned accordingly, if all the grading's taken into effect, if we know where all the conduit we need to go, um, everything like that. So it's really asking for the council's blessing to go to the next step and, and start to, um, you know, look at the feasibility of some of the improvements that are in the master plan and ground-truth our ability to do them and to phase them and what actual construction costs might look like. If you look at what was presented, what we told the consultants to do was to take out a lot of the new things proposed, uh, the, um, potential water feature, uh, a lot of the landscaping areas, the potential area for a new, um, performance area. And just, you know, start, start at the beginning, start at the bones. You know, the walkways, as they were depicted in, in the master plan and the increased lighting. And because of the walkways, what you'll also see here is relocating the monuments so they're right on the, uh, walkways. One of the things that we wanted to do, especially with this new oval walkway, was to bring the south end of the park into the park. Right now it seems like this dark, um, piece of the park that's all to itself. People rarely go out there. But the oval walkway brings it in and ties it into the center of the park. And then it takes the monuments and it puts them right on the walkway so you can walk right up to them. So these things are, you know, being brought as a concept that we could start to engage, um, with the final content process with right now.
And do these, does this scouting of the plan, um, allow for some of the other things that, to remain a possibility, you know, like the importance of, you know, just?
Nothing would be ruled out. I think that you, you, everything's, you gotta set up your walkways first, what's gonna be the flow? And then you can add on some of the other aspects of the master plan, maybe other new things we think about based on that. But if you know how the walkways need to be created, which, and they need to be to code, so it's almost a, a fundamental limiting factor.
Right.
Then you know you plan everything else off of that. And what I haven't mentioned is that this would also be what we'd really figure out, what would be the impact on current trees in the park if we were to make these improvements? Uh, which trees are likely to, um, have a short lifespan anyway? But which ones would be detrimentally impacted? Then we can check back in and say, all right, do we actually want to adjust something? Because we want to save a tree that might live for another twenty years. We could also come up with a replanting. What's, what's our tree succession plan? Um, what would we, uh, like to see for future tree plantings in the park? Match up with the new walkways we'd like to relocate? Now, just as a footnote, we have engaged with Heartwood Landscaping, that's been doing some tree pruning and planting for us. They are going to put together an inventory of the trees in the park in, in their, uh, their current state. They went through and they looked at everything involved.
Chip, I have one question up on the southeast or northeast corner.
Mm-hmm.
Where you have a crosswalk, uh, going over to Maiden Lane. And it's on the west side of Maiden Lane. Is there not a crosswalk on the east side of Maiden Lane because that's too close to the other crosswalk? I'm just thinking that's a more, uh, highly-used crosswalk on that, on that side of the street than it is towards the Verizon building.
Yeah, you know, I gotta say, I'm not quite sure. I, I never, um, was able to nail down why that suggestion was made to relocate that crosswalk. And that's something that we could take into consideration as we move forward. You know, where, would it be best to keep it where it is? Where it meets up with the, um, the northeast corner of Maiden Lane and Church of Bank? Or is there a sense to have it meet up with the northwest? We'd have to look into that. But that's not, that's not... But that's not, that's not set in stone.
Tom Colvis, any input, any?
No, I mean, we, part of the Parks Commission, we've been trying, we've been kinda itching at what's gonna happen next and move forwards and things, I know we have some definite concern about the condition of the walkways and so, to us it may make sense to start to move forward with the master plan, I mean, it's, it's permanent and the future minded as opposed to just doing it as temporary and takes care of a problem right now, I wouldn't change it a little bit later. I think we haven't, at a meeting considered this particular presentation by Chip, but I know we're all behind kind of moving forward and looking at what we could set in stone finally instead of saying, you know, that this is just an idea, it's just set in stone, what can we start working forward, figure out what we can do and make whatever progress there is we made, start doing that.
What would be next steps?
Think staff would have to look at what budgeting resources we have to actually engage engineers and sort of go from there.
So no estimates have been made on this? No estimates have been made on?
No estimates have been made. Well, I'm sorry, we do have some conceptual estimates in the master plan, but they're, they're pretty basic and could change drastically once you really get into the design process.
We'd like to move ahead with design for the sidewalks and the lights. There was enough ambivalence around the larger master plan and we couldn't hesitate to do that until we had this check-in with the council. Maybe frankly we could table it until there's, you know, a full council chair, but with the support for it, that's the next step, is trying to plug the sidewalks and lights with CIP.
Doesn't that make sense?
Would you need nothing from us?
Do you want a general sense of how we feel about it?
Glad we wanted, didn't we want a discussion of votes? I guess we didn't.
What's that?
I guess we just wanted for a check-in.
Right.
Anyone else in the audience who want to comment on the plan, or? So we're just?
It's an update, but we'll bring it back next month, warrant for action with intent on moving forward and we'll take a tentative policy with the council that to the extent that we have an opportunity to move forward and our budget preparations, including this,
Grand opportunities out there, Chip?
Yep.
Would that fall under, under the green lights, is it?
I'd have to look at that.
The sidewalk, B train sidewalk, right?
Yes, it would fall under that.
Alright, thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
First item on your manager reports is council calls and gestures. Look for any editorial comments, see if I captured your vision from the other night correctly. I think we should probably bring it back before actually when we're all here. Took four of the, anything that jumps out? Tim's already had his two additions, so that's all you guys.
Okay.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate the opportunity to have a thoughtful process to go through and say what do we want to work on in the next year. I think there was a lot of consensus around things like noise reduction, glad to see that in here. I also think, I have a neighbor, a constituent who's really excited about this volunteer appreciation effort and I know Chad and I, hopefully we'll help him with the rest of you make that vision a reality.
I was over in Lake Placid this weekend and I took some photos of this program they have called the Lake Placid Hall of Fame. And I'll circulate it to the council. Presently, there's some criteria for getting in and then once you're in, they post your, you know, the nice, more than a plaque, it's got your photo and a description of what you did to earn it, make your way into the Hall of Fame and then they're all mounted in their civic center, you know, and you can see thirty years of Hall of Famers. Something like that, give the council. Alright, anything else on that?
So we'll bring that back.
Bring it back and, you know, I've done one draft through official notes I took from me, so if you think I didn't get some point right, um, that's on the back. And then the other item is the budget development schedule. The, uh, you can redirect as necessary, but I'm proposing that right after the holiday, first week of January, we'll have a meeting with the finance committee. And then that following Monday is our regular council meeting on the fourteenth. And that'll be kind of a kickoff and we'll make a more formal presentation there. And then the following Mondays, the twenty first and the twenty eighth, depending on where we're at on the fourteenth, we can schedule additional meetings to continue the refining. Kind of see where we're at at that one. Probably makes sense to hold your Mondays at this point if you can. Some years we've gone a couple of Mondays, some days, some years we've been pretty close after the first meeting. And lastly, there's an update on the tax income finance district. It's hard to imagine that we're nearing the end of this journey that we've been on. We have ten years that we can issue debt and about four years left that we can issue debt. Maybe five, depending on where you start counting from, but likely at this point we should plan on four. Work right now, we have three and a half million left that we could issue. Voters have approved forty-two million. That forty-two million included ten million in grants from the federal government that never materialized. So it might make some sense to circle back to BEPSI, go through a process called substantial change, which is really just the vote of BEPSI as an update. BEPSI's asked us to give them an updated financial plan, which we're in the process of doing. And that's a plan for what we're gonna do for projects, public and private, in the next three and a half years, next four years. If it looks like we've got projects that would necessitate, or could necessitate us trying to go over the three, three and a half million, then we may come to the council and then ultimately to BEPSI for substantial change. Right now, we're capped at twenty-two, we might want to get upwards of clarity if we had the projects that would necessitate.
That's mostly around Federal Street?
Uh, yes and no, I mean, it's Federal Street, it depends on what we do with Fonda, it depends on the final design costs for Kingman, and then we might want to do it with the park. And then the big one is Brownfields, you know, so whenever somebody comes in and wants to go across from the city, they really need to help them, I think the Brownfields are parking. And so, I'm hesitant to say that we wouldn't be open for Brownfield's business until we get to the end of the ten years, I think that could have the effect of turning away some of the great projects. More accomplish, just kind of snapshot where we are. Any questions on this? That's all.
So, let's go back, would you be Ari?
No, Ari's not here.
Yeah?
No, this is Joseph. And he, he wanted to see what we guys, to see.
You want to come up, we, we were running a little ahead, so.
Yeah, they just said seven, we were told seven twenty-five.
Yeah, we, we got on about seven twenty.
Sorry.
That's right, come on up, he made the effort to trip in, I want to make sure we hear, what you have to share.
Appreciate the opportunity. I guess I should start with the fact that this is kind of a side story of the whole thing, but I was involved in a very bad vehicle accident several months ago. And Benson, the vicious dog, was with me during the accident and he sustained an injury in it and then, in the process, he lived up here for several months prior to that and sporadically he stayed here on and off. And there was no, there was never any issue, I should say, too, for at least several months from when we first moved up here, just because, I mean, it was probably not a wise choice, but we were just ignorant to it. We let Benson, because of the, where our back porch is on our house, it was, there was no real way to get to, you couldn't see the road from there or whatever, you could walk to it or whatever.
Are you referring to the same house on Bank?
On Bank Street, correct. And so we, when Benson had to go out, we let him out and he's a very good dog in regards to like staying in his territory or whatever, so he would do, he would run around and he would do his business and he's very, this is just a side brag, but he'd do his business in the woods, he's a very good dog like that. And he would come back and there was never any issue with that or anything. I took a job for several months, kind of like a contract position down in southeastern Vermont. And he came with me for the majority of the time, got into that accident after it happened and he sustained a pretty bad leg injury in the accident, head injury. While I was attempting to rescue him after the accident because he'd run off, he was terrified, I myself got struck by an automobile, bad leg injury, almost lost my leg, it was pretty bad. I was recuperating for about two months down in Burlington and then I resumed my recuperation up at our house, up on Bank Street or whatever. So, I only bring that up because a lot of the stuff that's in this report was told to me either secondhand or it was the first time I was finding out about it now. And there's just a lot of things about it that I not just don't agree with, but that are simply untrue or unstated in the actual report. One of them being that the woman who was bitten, she has a boyfriend and at one point when I was still in recovery, I was using a walker, some, and it was, it was just a ridiculous argument occurred, I don't remember what it was over, but he came at our vehicle that I was sitting in and I had my walker in the vehicle and he used not just threats of violence, but he like got up and started hitting on the vehicle and like trying to cause a fight or whatever. And then in the course of that, he's, he made allusions to like he would tell Mark what we were doing or something like that or whatever. And I had never met this kid, cause I was down, like I was saying, I was down in Addison County, so I didn't know what the deal was or whatever and I didn't know the severity of what had been, he'd been accused of doing or whatever, you know? And so, one point I wanted to make is, it says he's a vicious dog, he's not, we rescued him, he was extremely, extremely abused from the first owner that we got him from. And, and it's not even really a territorial thing either, cause I don't know if he's out there still, I don't want to cause an argument about it, but Mark, who's the landlord, who said that his dog got into attack with our dog, our dog does not care about other dogs, he doesn't go and fight them for any reason. One example of that is there's a puddle that is about literally a tenth the size of our dog that lives next door, and this is just one example. The puddle, upon meeting Benson for the first time, literally ran right up to him and like was, my, my dog's submissive in that regard, like they're friends now or whatever, you know? When Mark's dog came the first time and jumped out of his, I think it's a Tundra truck or whatever, I was playing ball with Benson, he was the dog that initiated contact during that first dog altercation with Benson. And I don't recall if I or Mark pulled him off him or whatever, but it is literally, besides one other case of a dog coming at my dog, the only other dog, time I've ever seen my dog fight another animal. And, I mean, I've been, I was raised, I was raised well by, by my parents and teachers, we've had dogs since I was like four or five years old, like I know when a dog is a serious threat and it's something that terrifies me, excuse me, it's just, I'm pretty emotional about this. It terrifies me to think ever that any animal I would have would do harm to either another human or even another dog, because I'm an animal lover or whatever. But Benson is the kind of dog where like, there's a litany of businesses around here that on an almost daily basis, he not only walks to, but he's like invited in and, and regaled with like pets by the people that own the businesses, like Rite Aid and the Catalyst Coffee or whatever, just being two examples of it, like he's not an antisocial dog or whatever. One thing missing from this report that is very important is to note that the girl who was bit, her boyfriend was the one, I mean, I guess I already noted this before, but her boyfriend was the one who created the, this situation where he got extremely threatening to us, he's either, we have a slew of text messages that he wrote in regards to threatening violence.
Did you have a video of him when he was threatening said violence?
I mean, there's, we're not making any of this stuff up, but that's just one aspect of it. Another aspect of it is, he, there was a gentleman who, at one point or another, he's done work for Mark in terms of housework, I believe insulation or something on the house. And so he was over periodically, he'd taken a shine to Jessica back there and then eventually that turned rather inappropriate at one point and, side note, she's gotta go to a, he's in his fifties or sixties, she's gotta go to a, what is that called tomorrow?
Restraining order meeting.
A restraining order meeting tomorrow morning. He would do certain things like, there was numerous instances of him stalking, but not just stalking, but like coming up into our house, like banging on our door, doing all this stuff. Certain things that would just startle my dog at various points or another so that he was like, he felt threatened or whatever. And I'm not saying that that advocates violence or whatever, but this report, after reading it and especially, like, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not like making light in any way of like people's accusations or whatever, but some of them either are, certain aspects are completely left out and some of them are just completely not true.
John Carlos.
And then Carlos, we have a very small chihuahua, I believe the incident where there was an actual bite mark on the girl, she had kicked the chihuahua that we have, or I don't, I don't know if it was a kick or whatever, but she made forceful contact with it and that was when that actual bit of contact occurred or whatever. But in terms of like, to wrap, to wrap up what I'm gonna say is, when I hear the term vicious used against him, it's just like, it, it cuts to me because he's really not a vicious dog, he's extreme, he's had an extremely difficult life, he's extremely well-loved, like he's beloved by ninety-nine percent of the people that he comes into contact with. And we have not been perfect people ourselves or whatever, but he's been, he's part of the catalyst that's helped us turn our lives around to a huge degree and it's like, we are, we've now gotten to the point where in the last several days, just because due to the severity of this and the extreme nature of what it's gone to, we use a muzzle on him, we, I keep him away from the house, if there, like if I can let my brother take him to a job site or something for a few days, I'll do that, like we're in a, and we're in a, at a point where attempting to find a different spot to stay, just not due to the, we love to stay here and we have like friends in this community that are And we have like friends in this community that are beautiful people, and we love it up here or whatever. But just the convergence of the four or five people that were involved in this that seemed to just want the dog away from the house is very startling to me. And it's like, I've spoken with my mother about it, and we conferred about whether or not I should give him away or something, but it's like, this is the first time ever. And he's lived all over the place, and he's been in numerous situations. This is the first time ever there's been any issue like this, any allegation like this. And we've, and, and it's just like, we've corrected it as much as we can. And I, I mean, in any other, in any other spot, he's never done anything like this. So it's like, when, it keeps me up at night to think about it, to like think what I could have done differently, to think about like, he's not abused, but I asked him to treat him like a king or whatever. We were told by Officer Benson that there's certain aspects of training that we should start to, to like utilize to perhaps calm him down or whatever. And we started doing those, but it's like, just, it's just extremely startling to see the term vicious used for him, when in reality, he's just an extreme, I'm sorry.
We just need to wrap it up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He's just extremely skittish. And it's, they're, the people involved aren't all like, they weren't just, it wasn't just innocence on their part. Like, there's been some weird aspects to living at this house that have, before the kids moved in, the ones that got bit and the ones that made the threats, and this guy that was stalking and knocking on our window and like being seen by the dogs looking in our window came, there was no issues. He ran around the yard, ran around everywhere with a puddle. So he's got a chihuahua for a brother. He is literally the kindest dog in the world. It's just certain aspects of the environment, in my opinion, have made it so that.
I think one of the things that we talked about earlier was that, is it true that the apartment doesn't allow dogs?
That's not, I mean, he had to.
Is that part of the lease?
He was, well, when Jess moved in, he required that he meet Benson first. Mark did, correct?
Yeah, Mark was well aware and told me, and it was like, he was told that I had the dog and that I need an apartment where I have the dog. He met Benson beforehand and he was fine with it.
Yeah, that was the part, that was the whole, that predicated.
From start to here.
It, that was predicated on us getting there, was that he had to meet the dog first.
Yeah, anyone else have anything else to share?
I mean, I don't want to take up any more of your time. I appreciate you.
Also, can I say one more thing?
Can Joe, can you just stop? It's just, at the end of the day, this whole situation, Benson was in the car. He saw his family of loved ones being threatened by someone. He may have slipped out of the door and started barking a little bit, same with Carlos. But when she made contact with Carlos aggressively, Benson is protective of his twelve-pound brother. And he's not an aggressive dog. He's not looking to hurt anyone. And he may have made a rash decision in that scenario, but he's not a vicious.
He's not a vicious dog by any means. And this is like, this is, and I understand that there's a huge difference, and I get it. But this really is like a son to me, like, and I, I've contemplated getting rid of him. And I, every time I see him contemplating getting rid of him, he like comes over and puts his head down on my lap as though like, it mitigates that thought process, like. We put a news on him, we've done everything we can, we're trying to get out of there as soon as possible. He's not a threat to the community, like he would never bite anyone. It's a set of three or four people that he's had interactions with that have been rather close to violence.
I would share with you, and we can wrap this up. We'll deliberate on this afterwards. Putting the dog down isn't an option, if that's what you're worried about, I can tell you that. If you're working towards getting out of there, that will resolve the issue.
Okay. That is, that's entire, that's the entirety of it. And it's, even if we were allowed to stay with the dog at this point.
We would watch it.
It's, it's.
You guys are headed down the right road to resolve this. We are not, as a council, we have, I can, I can tell you that we are not looking to put the dog down. So if you focus on getting out of the apartment, finding a new place to live, then that will resolve the issue.
And we're not being conspiratorial about this, like this is an actual law law, and we do everything in our, like, talk to the people at Right Aid and see what they say about him. I hope, I hope you guys get to meet him someday. He is the best dog in the world.
I knew it was that dog, so we.
I am very grateful, you guys, and thank you for hearing us. Really, really grateful.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Much obliged.
We have to approve warrants. We have multiple, one, two, three, four, five warrants that need to be approved. Okay, I had a question for you earlier too, and tell me if I'm crazy, but on the warrant that the puddle can break out from the rest of our justice. The only reason I ask that is there's some that, I think they're far around. I mean, just, I think you could just give us a clearer, maybe understanding what that breakout expenses are and what they're for.
Sure.
As I went through them, I think I know what they are, but I don't know what, maybe, it might just give us a better understanding about what the rest of justice does on a number of certain instances. I meant to ask you that this morning.
Yeah, let me look into it and see, but there's limitations to the software, so that's, you know, that's my only hesitation.
Is your preference, Dom, that we take these individually?
You can move them to the slate. That's your thing, right?
That would be my preference if other council members are open to that. If you have a chance to look at them, if you want to go individually, you can do that too.
Marie had one, I think she.
Yeah, I had, I had a question on one, one for November second, because one of the checks was made out. Vehicle mentioned from the sidewalk.
So why don't we do that one, then we'll do the others as a slate?
So, if I may, the way that, you know, there's all kinds of documentation that indicates how that came about and the way to that in particular. You're not going to be able to approve that warrant, because there's only four in here.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, right.
So if Marie accuses, she won't, you know.
So it would be just that one, that would be a carryover?
Yeah, yeah, you could do that, or you could just, you know.
What was the amount of that?
Eight hundred and fifty-two forty-one.
And that was approved by multiple?
It's been approved three times. It's a reimbursement for an insurance claim, so, you know, that's for a damage. Damage, yeah.
So you're good with this, pulling that out and adding it to the next, what's the date on that one?
November second to the sixteenth.
I've been dragged to Belgium for a while.
Yeah, I don't see that there's, my opinion personally, Marie, is that I would be uncomfortable with you voting on that warrant along with the rest of the council. So we can get it done.
And Andrew's sounds estranged anyways, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I appreciate the disclosure, but I think it's within bounds, yeah.
Okay, so that said, we will let the minutes know that we noted the relationship, but we will continue to vote on the slate as being notified, so.
So you're looking for a motion to approve the whole slate?
The five, the five dates.
Five dates, so that's ten five, ten eighteen, eleven two, eleven sixteen, eleven sixteen, twelve three.
Eleven nineteen.
Oh, eleven nineteen, excuse me.
We'll move the slate as presented.
Twelve seven. So Michael makes a motion to approve the slate, to approve of the warrants. Is there a second?
Second.
Eight seconds. Any other comments? We noted Marie's. Marie, any others? Any other relatives on there we need to know about?
Not that I saw.
Michael, you got any relatives on there?
I believe so. Well, McCarthy's out there.
Although, if they ever say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have board meeting, council minutes from October eighth. Please note, the November meeting was a meeting on goals and strategy, but we'll come up at the next meeting. Motion to approve the minutes of October eighth. So.
Second.
Second. Any changes, amendments, corrections to the minutes? Once again, Kristen, nice job. Thank you very much. So although in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mayor's report, we need to reappoint Rebecca Pfeiffer to DRV for a three-year term. So we entertain a motion to do that.
I agree that we reappoint Rebecca Pfeiffer to the DRV.
Second.
Second by Marie. Any comments? Chip, you're all good with that, right?
I suppose.
Thank you for that enthusiastic endorsement.
That was very good, Ray.
Yeah, Rebecca, I inquired, and that's pretty much was the consensus, that Rebecca was doing great beyond the assistant chair, and we can prefer times of, so we have a motion to approve Rebecca to a three-year term. Any second to it, right? Any other comments? Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Mayor's report, quickly, in your packet also, you had a thank you note from Leon Birkin from the co-op, thanking the city for all of our efforts to recognize their one-hundredth anniversary, which included a number of the two banners on Main Street, which Marty coordinated, our cow out front, the mayor's focal competition, that we organized all of it, but we did play a role in keeping them on track. It's a tractor parade, so they're very appreciative of our efforts. I would share that I did get an email today from Tara Tally over at Anne Digger, who are coming up on their one-hundredth anniversary, and we will have a discussion on how we might celebrate that. Digger has been located downtown for many years and has been instrumental in a lot of things that has happened around St. Albans account, so we will have that discussion. So for me, I don't have a whole lot to share. I continue to hear nothing but good things about St. Albans and what has happened. Almost a day doesn't go away, doesn't happen. I think we should celebrate that. I think we're very fortunate to have a team in place. I'd like to recognize Marty for all of your, I noted Curry and all of our efforts. Marty, you've gone above and beyond, and we thank you for that. I think, since I started as mayor, I have done nothing but advocate for the team we have in place, the ownership they've taken to the city. And I think we're very fortunate to have the people in place that we do. And we will soon be up to speed. Curry, what would be your timeframe relative to what your goal is to having someone hired?
Hopefully, early to mid-January.
Early what?
Early to mid-January, play decision.
And Marty, you're looking for?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Hopefully by the end of the year, we will. I would just say that my job has been made very easy by the team we have at Public Orders, and specifically the leader they have in Walter Kane. He has stepped up and taken ownership and has done a phenomenal job leading that team and creating a very high morale. And those guys, they don't need babysitting. They know what needs to get done, and they get it done, so.
And I would say we were fortunate enough to pull Mr. Rothko in on a day on the back loader during the first storm.
Alan has been very accessible.
Alan has been a great asset as well in the coming quarter. Couple of things upcoming, just to touch on all the activities. Festival of Trees was a huge success. The tree lighting with the fireworks, heard nothing about it. Ran into an individual from upstate New York who was over visiting his daughter. He couldn't believe what St. Albans is doing. The tractor parade was a huge success, as was Ringing the Bells. Those are three major events that happened within twenty days, maybe not even fifteen days, two weeks. But we've been very fortunate, not only for those events, but for the people who have put them on. Emerson and Suzanne Leno, the messenger, putting on Ringing the Bells. Judy Zoldis, Madonna Howard, working hard on Festival of Trees. And then Leon Birkin and this team at the co-op for the tractor parade. So we'll continue on with that. In Good Taste will be held here at City Hall February first. A not a very event that attracts four hundred people to the downtown. So we will continue trying to do those events with great people downtown. We're very fortunate. Many, many towns would love to be in ours. Marie, do you want to add anything?
No, it's just, I'm proud to be, to be part of the city. It's like, it's come a long ways in a few years, and it seems nice to have it back.
I would like to acknowledge your Christmas light telltale, Jim Ellis, as well. Marty, you want to touch on, I mean, we touched on that a little bit, maybe we, the consensus may be that maybe that we're not as well decorated as we have been in the past. And not, not with downtown, but residential area.
The timing on weather was tough for that.
Exactly.
I think it got cold a lot quicker than people expected, and may have impacted that, so.
Supposed to be forty-ish on Friday, so hopefully.
We may rebound from it over the weekend. I know that's my.
Seeing being on a ladder in my future?
Yeah, right.
One, one event is the Last Night Events, or will be happening throughout downtown. And folks should go to lastnightbt.com and look at all of the events at different businesses around town and check out the gala. I hear there's a band playing. It'll be fun.
Yeah, so thank you for that reminder, Michael. The reception on the Last Night has been excellent. The team, Andrea, the changer, Eric Johnson, a number of them have worked hard to pull this off. Once again, they have raised from sponsorship thousands of dollars, and our businesses have stepped forward to support these events. We're fortunate from that perspective. Kate, you want to?
Yeah, I was going to mention Last Night too, so that's great.
I did want to say that I got two compliments from folks in Ward Four about how great the snow removal and the sidewalks were and the quick response with the early snow, so really appreciate all of that work and noticing. And it's safe to drive around the neighborhoods and get snow a little earlier than usual. I appreciate that.
Well, there is a, which we probably certainly, oh, our insurance has gone up significantly because Marty has gotten behind the cost.
But on Squishery, it's about a lot more often.
We do have some concern about that, but I think that's, Marty, you can add last word if you want.
Nope. Good job. Happy holidays.
Dom, any other business?
No, good.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thanks for your efforts. Kristen, thank you.
Well, I thought we were on track for eight for a while.
I know, I know. I knew I was going to hear about it.
God, you had a great start. Marty's outside of your control.
I have a five-minute queue for that.
You need a minute.
Yeah, go ahead. I have, I mean, you're good with that.
I was trying to figure out the right route for.